All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Dr. Markley?
All right, thank you folks for the opportunity. Mr. Schell, before I start, I understand you said they were gonna have their visit on the 12th for their, today is the 12th. Any feedback on how that went?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I don't.
Yes, we had an excellent.
Thank you for the question.
Yes, we, we had a A-plus compliance visit today. They left approximately 1:35, and so, we just have some small things to work on, but we did excellent with Johnson Pre-K Center today.
Great.
Thank you very much for asking.
Thank you. Folks, you have to understand, we took over Head Start three years ago from a program that had, that had its, from an org, a group that had basically its accreditation yanked. And the turnaround we've seen in that program in three years is really a credit to the work that Ms. Miles has done, that you as a board have done in terms of leadership, and, and the folks who are in that building every day. They are making a difference for the students in that building. So, when we brought that proposal forward three years ago to pick up Head Start, I can honestly say, one of the best decisions that I've, that I've made in my time here, so thank you. Which leads us to another opportunity to make another great decision. When I first came here, we were heading into a recession, we were looking at ways to cut costs, and one of the things we had to do was, was close the school. We reopened it two years later, DC Virgo, 'cause that was a commitment we made that we would reopen that school. And, we wanted to do some things different there, and we've done things differently there. But there's an opportunity now to take that work that we've done there to the next step. And that is through a partnership with UNCW. I'm gonna ask Van Dempsey, who is the dean of the Department of, at Watson College of Education, and Dr. Danielle Rosenberg, who's a professor, to come forward and help me work through a presentation talking about a unique partnership with DC Virgo. This'll be an informational meeting tonight, action item for this will be next month. So, folks, if you'll come forward, and I'll sort of work through this. The legislature, the legislator, about three years ago, passed a law that schools of education should create what they called lab schools, unique kind of partnerships. That initial law was designed for the, for these schools to work with what are called Tier One counties, which are economically disadvantaged counties. And the original partnership was to be with Columbus County. That partnership, for lots of reasons, did not come to fruition. The law was changed last year to allow these lab schools to partner with a low-performing school in a Tier Three district, and we're a Tier Three county in terms of economic development. And so, we've been in discussion now, and I've been sending you information about that, for about the last six months, in terms of waiting for the legislation to be finalized and to get that process moving. A lab school is a unique partnership, and it's, I'll let probably Danielle, who's been leading this up, talk a little bit about what, what a lab school is.
All right, so, anyway, I'm gonna add to that slide. So, according to the legislation, a lab school in the state of North Carolina is actually going to serve low-performing students, and it also is going to help teacher preparation and leadership preparation programs at the university. Historically, there have been lab schools across the country. One of the most famous is at the University of Chicago. Lab schools started in the late 1800s. They're everywhere, but they are opportunities, places where kids' creativity and innovation is nurtured, where their capacity to move on to all kinds of careers is actually nurtured. So, we wanna take that opportunity side, that has already been historically grounded, and combine it with what's been required in the legislation here, which is that we have to serve kids in low-performing schools, and we need to create a good best-practice model for teacher preparation program and leadership preparation program.
All right. As you can see, the chancellor serves as the administrative head of the lab school. It's gotta serve students in at least three consecutive grade levels, K through eight. We're having a discussion with the staff and with community about what that new grade configuration would possibly be at Virgo. It's to improve performance, provide exposure to training. You have to understand, these folks produce the vast majority of the teachers that we hire every year, and they are high-quality teaching candidates. One of the reasons we're able to perform the way we do is because of the partnership we have with the university and the quality of the students that come from that university. We think this is the way to enhance their skills coming to us. We have a lot, we have several schools that are, that are in high-poverty situations, and if we can get those teachers who are coming to us exposure to that before they come to us, we think it's a win-win. So, we think this is a unique partnership that will benefit both sides. Talked about that. One of the things the university can provide, and I'll ask the dean to talk a little bit more about that, is wraparound services. There are a lot of other colleges besides the College of Education at UNCW, social work. Those folks will work on the Health and Human Services side, that can come in and provide community services in this location to extend beyond what we can do traditionally as a school system. Possibility for additional grant funding, connections to university staff and volunteers. I'll ask the dean to talk a little bit more about what that would look like in our schools.
Let me follow up on what the superintendent said. Part of what we think will help make this work is the relationship we already have with the new Hanover County schools, what we do in educator preparation, including teachers and principals, what we do in joint grant initiatives, what we do in joint professional development initiatives to support new teachers. So, we feel like we've got a foundation to do that work, plus the relationship that we already have with Virgo through teacher education and through professional development. The broader partnership that the university can bring to this, the superintendent mentioned social work, counseling, psychology, what we can do with our nursing program, our school health program, the professional development resources that we can bring from Watson, the collaborative relationship that can teach us things, what can we learn through our relationship with Virgo and through our relationship with the new Hanover County schools that helps to improve the preparation of educators and the, including teachers and principals. The instant, the university's ability to support grant writing, the university's ability to help garner resources to support professional development, to support enrichment experiences for children. We really are focused, we just had a meeting today for about an hour and a half, how do we bring the full resource weight of the university to support the relationship that we think we can create at Virgo through the lab school?
There's a couple of things that has to happen. Because we're not a Tier One county, they have to submit a waiver to work with us. That's their, their next step. That waiver was originally due in September, they'd be given an extension of that until October. They also have to draft an MOU with us, and Wayne is working with the legal department at UNCW to do that. That's the document that I will bring to you, most likely next month, if not next month, at the November meeting, for your approval. Community forums are taking place now, and the design team is working on that transition. So, it's been a great process. When we opened that school five years ago, this is the next logical step in that process, and really builds on our promise to make, to that community when we reopen that school. So, that's the, sort of the 10,000-foot view. We're happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Question I would have would be, I assume this school will not have a district, it would be a county-wide attendance zone, is that correct?
Much like a charter school operates in terms of enrollment.
Say that again?
Like a charter school is open to anyone, this would be open to folks, students in the county.
Low performing.
Low performing, yes.
How will the university measure outcomes with, differently than New Hanover County schools has in terms of looking at, you're bringing different resources to bear. I didn't know if you, your outcomes would be measured differently.
Well, we, we parallel the accountability model that exists for the state of North Carolina. That's a little bit different for lab schools, but you see similarities. What we wrap around that is, we have the educator preparation component, what's, what are the goals and the outcomes of the professional development we're looking for? If we build special initiatives that are based in the school, what kinds of outcomes are we looking for, for those? And we have to establish what we expect the evidence to be of success, and then report that to, back to, in this case, it would report to the general administration of the UNC system. That's where the governing body of the statewide initiative sits.
And I see, I think there's some other measures what we look at here. How many of the teachers who come through here that are theirs end up working in our, in our hard-to-staff schools? We already, we offer a 9% supplement at about a half a dozen of our schools. So, if these students who come to this school then end up becoming teachers in some of those schools, and does that impact the results that are happening there? So, those are results beyond just a typical ABC kind of score you're gonna see.
So, the reporting requirement is, is what? You report to the, to the governing bar, body, and then you would, I'm assuming, then report back to both the university and then to, to the Board of Ed, correct?
The, the reporting require, the reporting line is from the lab school to an advisory committee, which the chancellor convenes. The chancellor reports to a subcommittee of the Board of Governors of the university's system, and the Board of Governors is the group that actually oversees the work of the lab schools. Most of that's gonna be through the subcommittee, not through the actual full board. And then, the board has a relationship back to the State Board of Education, the Board of Governors, back to the State Board of Education and the General Assembly.
So, is the, is the data, or is, what are they exactly overseeing? Are they overseeing the, the work of the, the teachers and, and that portion, and the student, and the student outcomes? Are they responsible for that as well, or are we still responsible?
The university. Yeah, it becomes a, or, just the best analogy, it becomes a university charter school.
So, this board would have no role in this school? We're giving up one of our schools, that we would have no role in, is that right?
It would be, the school would be, the operational responsibility of the school would move over to the university.
And what numbers do you think, well, that's the problem we're having now, are getting the numbers up, and as overcrowded as we are in many of our other schools, I'm just a little uneasy about giving up a school that we don't know how it's gonna help us. I think it's what, K-8 is the, what they're thinking about?
We had a discussion about a K-8 model, we've talked about numbers. About 300 students makes this economically viable, and so, I think that helps us long-term. If there are 300 students and school, places that are coming in from areas where we have crowded, I think it helps us there. It also helps that community. We struggle to keep that school right now, the current enrollment's about 150 students. So, what we're doing is not bringing folks into that school. So, if this helps bring students into that school, I think it's a win-win for both of us.
Well, I agree with you.
A question about, about funding. How does that affect funding? I know UNCW would be bringing teachers in to that lab school. Does that affect us, are we able to move those, some of those teachers into other positions?
Yeah, what it does for funding is, just like a, just like a charter school, the local and state dollars follow the student to that school. Then, they would be responsible as, as the entity for the hiring of folks within that school. So, logically, they would most like, there are folks there who would come back to that school, they would be technically university versus our employees, but if they don't go back there, then we've always had vacancies for teachers in our district, so. We don't think, it's not an issue of somebody, we can absorb the personnel whichever direction they go.
What about transportation for these students? Charter schools do not provide transportation, what would we do?
The legislation says that we work with them to provide transportation, and then the transportation dollars that would go with those students would come to us.
So, we'd be responsible for?
We'd be their partner.
Yes, 'cause you don't have the buses that we have.
We don't, yeah, that's true.
But if you have any drivers, let us know.
If I have any drivers that I will recommend that you should let drive a school bus, I'll, I'll let you know. And that would be the same with child nutrition, we would work with them on child nutrition.
Okay, good.
And work on the reimbursable portion of that.
Maybe we can throw Tras Coliseum into this mix and do some, do some trading there, save us some money with graduation. I would be happy to entertain that conversation.
Mr. Schell?
From the standpoint of citizens that are watching this at home, that may have an interest in going to the lab school, what will the lab school, I know you've gone through it, but from their perspective, what do you offer them that would make it exciting for them to come, different than what they're getting right now?
One of the things we talked about is that we have a STEM center, a center that actually focuses on STEM education. We have these programs already fully functioning that parents, they pay for. So, if we could bring those entities in, and we've already started conversations with them, and Chris Gordon, our STEM director, is actually on the design team, that is a key support for Virgo. So, we could enhance even further the work that they're already doing with STEM. The teachers have already mentioned that professional development is key to them. So, what makes a good school is high-quality teachers, we all know that. So, if we can make the work that they do even more exciting, so that they're more passionate about it, then I think that's, that makes a difference. It's critical in the lives of kids. And we're still talking about a number of other things.
There are, there are summer camps that they do at UNCW that these students can't access because of cost. They have a foundation system that's much, obviously much, I think they have a much larger foundation than, than we would have. And so, if there are ways to access that foundation, help these students with summer programming that's not currently available to them. That's an example of something that we're looking at.
Number one, just to be clear, anybody, can anybody go to the school? As a, as a, as a char, I mean, if it's, it's like a charter school, that I understand.
Right.
You know, if, if, say, a parent of a high-performing student wants to have, this child have the experience of working with the university, could they come there?
As you read the legislation, there's, there's nothing, it says the school has to be identified as low-performing.
That understand?
It doesn't speak to the, to the parents and students who could go to that school.
So, you could not tell, your thinking is, you could not say, well, this kid's too smart to be coming here, or this kid's been doing too well to be coming here. You couldn't do that.
No.
The other question was asked was, what happens down the road if y'all get tired of it?
The legislation is, mandates five years.
Oh, okay.
So, at the end of five years, then there's a, a renewal, so you examine where the school is, successful, not successful, and then you as a board would make a decision whether to continue that partnership or to take back the, the school.
Okay, all right.
What kind of reporting would we receive since we no longer, other than transportation and child nutrition, have a part in this, so?
Well, he mentioned that there's a board that has to be put together, a, advisory board, that includes, I'm required to be on that advisory board, so.
So?
I would report back to you on a regular basis.
And then, any report that goes to the state, would the school board get a copy of that as well?
If, I can promise you that, number one, with superintendent on the advisory board, you're gonna have a strong voice, if the last six months is any indication. If we are asked, and we would certainly invite ourselves, as you didn't ask, to come give updates on how we're doing, I think, going back to Mr. Schell's question, it's important for us to understand, us at the university, the folks at the university, we are in the process of moving toward the operation of what's called a lab school, but in that lab school, we are educating children of New Hanover County. We're not educating children of the university. And so, that is, that is a sobering responsibility that we take seriously. These are children of families and communities in New Hanover County, and we would want to maintain a close connection, number one, with the school district, and then, number two, with the board, to make sure we are constantly sensitive to that relationship.
What about special ed services? What is your plan to offer special ed services to students?
If those two slides ever be required to provide?
I know, what is the plan, though? Have you thought about that?
We would hire the appropriate specialists to assist with the population that we receive at the school. So, I think, right now, we just have to wait on the enrollment, to see what happens, who those students are.
We're assuming those services would be provided, and we're in preliminary talks about the budget, but that's part of the discussion about the budget, how to make sure we can support those services.
Do you have any wraparound services, you talked about wraparound services available for mental health through the university, do you have anything like that for special ed at the university?
We, we can-
Any kind of support services?
We, we prepare educators who do that, we engage in professional development to support educators, we have joint task forces and commissions. We met with the dean and Health and Human Services today about the potential for that with social work and health and wellness-related issues. We will talk to the dean and Arts and Sciences about the potential for that with counseling, psychology, kinds of supports. But all of those things right now, we're sort of on the map for what this school might look like.
And that's one of the things why it has to be a partnership, because these students will come to us if, if this is K-8 in ninth grade. So, while they may have the technical control of the school through the legislation, we've got the expertise that they're gonna have to tap into. So, while we may not be the hiring of special ed teacher, I think, as, as a, as an educator of all the kids in this county, if I've got somebody that can help them do that planning, I'm gonna make sure they've got the resources for that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I understand that waiting to see who comes, but doing the planning ahead of time, you know, I, I like hearing that you've, you've planned for, for mental health and for some of those other components, but planning for special ed ahead of time is extremely important to me. So, knowing that you've planned for those wraparound services for special ed, no matter who comes, is important.
It, it would be part of the way the school is defined, so, once we get to the point where we're actually out in the community recruiting students, marketing and, in essence, to come to the school, that framework for what the school can do and support's gonna be articulated. So, we would know then, we are recruiting a population of students who would need those and benefit from those services.
Not to get lost in, in the details, that we have been really excited about the possibility, and I hope that comes through, because ultimately, when I've talked to kids at Virgo, they wanna be mechanical engineers and software developers, and those kinds of dreams are the kinds of dreams we need to support. They already know the colleges that they wanna attend, we just need to help them get there. And if we can do this in collaborations, then we need to do it, because they deserve it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Just for your information, there are two other lab schools that are currently in operation, but those are school within a school model. In other words, there's a classroom within, a, a lab classroom within a public school. And to be honest, that's the easy route to take to, to do that, because you're only really dealing with one classroom within 30. This will be the first full-school lab school, one that opens, in North Carolina. So, there are a lot of logistical things that we are, that we're working through. It's been fun to watch, 'cause all of the folks who are sitting here, senior staff, are, have been in, in some of those design team meetings, and I love my university partners, and there are things that I would not want in their world, and they're just discovering some of the things that you guys deal with as a school board on, on a regular basis. It's been a good process. Our next is, we went through a very difficult transition about a year and a half ago, taking a school within a school program, which was our immersion program at Forest Hills, and moving that to a full-blown immersion school at Gregory, all the while, still serving the STEM students who were there in that magnet program. And so, after their first full year of operation, I thought it would be good to bring those folks forward, to give you an update on, on some of the trials and tribulations they've had that first year, and a lot of the successes. I will tell you, their kindergarten class is 88 students with a waiting list for immersion, so the program has definitely, is one that the community has embraced. We also have some folks here from Participate, which you may formally know as VIF, David Young, and I'll ask them to come forward. So, at this time, I'll ask Dr. Smith come forward to lead the presentation and make introductions.
Thank you, Dr. Markley, and good evening to everyone. Actually, you have done, completed my introduction for the most part. I definitely wanted to highlight the partnership that we have with the community. As Dr. Markley said, we've had more than 100 families to apply for the available 88 seats that we have in this year's kindergarten class, which we think serves as true evidence of the support from the community and of the partnership that we have with our families and, and with our staff. We have with us members of our Gregory School team, and I'll let Ms. Lampley recognize them, but we also have with Ms., with us this evening, Ms. Lampley, the principal of Gregory, as you know, she was brand-new to our district and challenged with bringing together two school staffs and, and creating an instructional program, as Dr. Markley has said, with both the, the implementation of immersion at Gregory, but also honoring our commitment to the students who signed on to Gregory as STEM students. And we're very excited about the work that they've done this year. And also, at the very back of the room, very close to the exit, we have our partners from Participate, and they are here to answer any questions that you might have about teacher support, the instructional model that we're currently using, or our curriculum development. So, without any further ado, I'll bring Ms. Lampley up.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate the opportunity to share all the wonderful things that we have going on at Gregory. I would like to introduce my supporters in the audience. Thank you to my two assistant principals, Sherry Ashley and Stephanie Smith. You guys went away. And then, as you see, behind them, we have some of our staff members who so graciously came out this evening to support this presentation. So, I want to personally thank them. And we also have some parents in the audience, and I wanna thank you guys for coming out tonight, so. Lots of support, and I think that goes back to what Mr. Schell said about parent support really is the key to making this all work. And so, that's something that we've worked really hard on this year, and really proud about that. So, I'm just gonna go through a few slides and talk a little bit about some of the challenges. Even though there were challenges, it led to such great opportunity for our staff. So, some of these things that were listed, I will just kinda talk about some of those. Last year, I think you all know, I was new to the district, so learning all about New Hanover County was, was really important to me, and a challenge as well, 'cause you're trying to know who to call, who to talk to when you need things, and had a lot of support, and so that was fantastic. We did a lot of hiring last year, hiring new staff, we doubled in size, so we had over about 40 new people onboard last year. With the merging of the two schools together, we also had a lot of staff members that were coming from other places, as well as staff members that remained at Gregory, and so, we really had to get to know each other and spend some time building those relationships. Same with our families and our parents. We did a lot of team-building last year. We did a lot of team-building activities with our kids, because our kids had to get to know each other. So, it was a, really a, a great year, lots of learning happened, and lots of opportunities for us to come together, even in the summer, to kind of recreate what we wanted that to look like this year. So, we've got a lot of great things that's been going on, our PTA, we have over 200 members last year, so, really getting our parents involved. We started a new after-school program. Gregory had never had an after-school program before, and we found out that was really important to our parents, so we wanted to help out, and started the after-school program last year. I think we ended with about 20, 25 kids. We're already up to, almost, close to 40 this year, so definitely an interest of our Our community, we've done a lot of community building, wanted to get out there in our community. We have been to the Latino Festival that's held every year out at Ogden Park, we had a booth set up, and it was really exciting to, we had a, an iPad with the kids actually performing on there, and the parents could see that in action. And so many of our Latino families didn't know that we had this to offer, so just getting out there and informing our parents, I think has been my goal for the year. We've had lots of parent meetings, we've invited parents in, because we want their, them to know what their children are getting involved in, and be that support, because it does make a huge difference when we have everybody working together. We held tours all last spring, I think we ended up having about six tours, had great turnout for those, parents actually got to come during the school day. We talked about what the curriculum looks like, what that, what a typical kindergarten day would be for their child, and then, we took them into the classroom so they could see that in action. And that was the most powerful thing, when they saw the, the kids responding in such a positive way.
Do you mind explaining a little bit more about each one of those items?
Sure. So, going, I've just explained the Latino Festival. We also do a lawn party, which was something new last year. We invite, and this is a time that we wanted to get our community members, our family members, to come out in a non-threatening way, so they could meet each other. We have lots of new teachers, new staff, and we just felt like it was really important to just get our families on the campus. So, we had local food trucks come out, we had a DJ, a local DJ come out, we had all of our teachers, each grade level had a booth, and all they did is play interactive games with the kids and the families. games with the kids and the families. And parents could go from table to table and get to know the staff and play games, and just a fun environment. That, we did that again this year. It was just a lot of fun. Parent Advisory Committee meetings were just monthly meetings that we held for any parent that would like to come out, and we just gave updates on things that were going on in our school, as far as STEM, as far as STEM, immersion, anything that might be of interest to our parents. Just another way to get them in the building to communicate. Again, we've talked about the PTA. Popsicles on the playground, we do that with our rising kindergarten students in the summer, before school starts. We invite all the kindergartners to come out. They meet on the playground, they all get popsicles, and it's just a social event, and they have the best time. So, the first day of school, they've all met a friend. So, global Earth Day celebrations. Last year, we had a, our spring fling actually fell on right there near Earth Day. And so, our PTA was really instrumental in coming up with activities for each station that were really Earth Day, global, friendly. We had a fantastic turnout for that. And we actually had lots of volunteers. Our PTA actually lined all that up, where volunteers came from UNC Wilmington, and they planted seeds. It was just all different kinds of activities. So, it was just a lot of fun. Again, parent curriculum night, invite parents to come out. We had different opportunities and stations for them to come visit. Parents actually got to make choices of what they would like to know more about, and they got to sign up and come to those classes. Surf Rider Foundation, I don't know if you're familiar with them, but it is a partnership that is striving to protect our beaches, and they actually support our campus cleanup. So, they come out and help us with that. Lawyers for Literacy, these are lawyers in New Hanover County Schools that come out and tutor and read with our students, which is really nice. And then, parent workshops. We just offer lots of different parent workshops, whether, whether it's in our curriculum night environment, or if we just invite them to come in and come to a parent tour. So, really trying to get our parents involved. We've done-
Sounds like you have a lot of activities-
We do.
-for the school.
We really do, and we just felt like that was the piece that we really needed to educate our families, and getting them in the door and making them feel welcome is just so important to me. And I think that the staff that I've hired, we all have that vision. I think hiring people that have the same vision of you is very important, and trying to retain them as well. So, we're really excited about what we've done this year, and can't wait to see the improvements as the year goes forward, so. Again, we do want to honor our STEM families and our kids that are there. All kids respond to STEM. All kids need that opportunity to be involved with STEM. So, we don't want to run that as a separate program. STEM should be infused in everything that we do. So, our teachers, we do have a STEM coordinator at the school. She's doing lots of staff development to help our teachers with their lesson plans, infuse those STEM activities in the classroom. We don't want it to feel like kids have to go to lab to get STEM. Even though we have that lab, it's a support. But we really want to get that going in the classrooms with our, all of our teachers. So, she's instrumental in helping us with that. Some of the things that we've participated in to support the STEM, again, are Science Olympiad, Squeak Squad, do a lot of little robots, the Sphero robots. Our kids love those. We offer broadcasts, where our kids actually run broadcasts, and we do that on Fridays. And we have maker spaces that our media coordinator has implemented in part of her media rotation. So, we really want to keep that, keep that STEM focus alive as well, as, as we infuse the immersion piece as well. Just to talk a little bit about our immersion this year, we have 11 international teachers, and they vary from Spain, Colombia, China, Ecuador, Honduras, Venezuela. We also have 15 immersion classes right now. We have, that's in K-5. And then, we have an international teacher in 6th, 7th, that is teaching content science and infusing those, the Spanish language vocabulary in with that science. So, that's a really nice marriage of the two.
Any other options for a second?
Sure.
The Chinese part, that is for our middle school students. The parents had wanted an additional language when they went to middle school, so they've brought in a VIF, a Chinese teacher. They also teach Chinese to students at Williston, since they are just across the, the bridgeway there.
We have 194 students right now that are being served in our immersion program. That's kindergarten through 5th grade. I look at that as 194 bilingual citizens that we're gonna have. So, that is just such a great opportunity for our students. Very proud that we had over 100 applicants for our kindergarten, that we have a nice, healthy waiting list. That proves to me that we're doing something right. The parents want to be here. Our kids are doing a fantastic job. And then, like I said before, our parent tours, I think, really does speak to that. Getting our parents in the door to show them what we have to offer is really important. We also, that was our elementary piece, and we'll talk a minute about the secondary piece. We do partner really close with Williston. Mr. Vilanz and I are on, we're on speed dial with each other quite a bit. But we have a really nice partnership there, because our students actually go over to Williston for electives, and in 6th and 7th grade. And then, he also has some students that benefit from coming over to our school to be a part of that Mandarin program. And we, my Mandarin teacher actually will be working with a student in high school this year for credit. So, excited for that partnership. The Mandarin Chinese is offered to 6th and 7th graders, that is, as one of their electives. And Gregory students have that opportunity as an elective to take STEM as a lab, or the connexiones, if they've been in the immersion since kindergarten through 5th grade. And we do offer that science content as a blended Spanish-science content class, which is building that vocabulary in English and Spanish in science. And just a brief overview of our student outcomes so far. The blue model on the left side represents 2016, and on the right is 2017. This actual model is for English Language Arts. And if you can see across the bottom, it's by grade level. So, 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th. And then, in math, again, we have, the blue is 2016, red is 2017, and again, by grade level, 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th.
Gregory was K-5 before the immersion, that's why you don't see a middle school number there, until last year.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Just to clarify, the numbers on the side are representative of the 0, 5, 10, 15, 20?
This number?
The percentage of the-
Percentage, yes. And then, just to talk a little bit about moving forward, and my goals for Gregory, again, is to keep, keep that student achievement going. We, although we made progress, we still want to make more. We've got to do better and better each year. We've put a lot of things in place to make that happen. Our, our teachers, I think, really benefited this summer. We pulled them in over the summer and offered some really strong professional development. They feel, just from what I'm hearing from my staff, I feel like that we have those clear expectations set. It's, it has run so smoothly, and we've just better prepared them for the year to come, which is what we needed, is just the time, to really see what we had last year and put some things in place for us to improve. We also want to increase that awareness of the Spanish immersion program. We still talk to people who don't know about Gregory. So, we want that awareness out there to all of our families, so that we do have a really nice, diverse population in our school. Again, community partnerships are important to me. Being new to New Hanover County, I think those will strengthen over time. And again, like I said, professional development, giving teachers the tools that they need to be successful is top priority. Yes.
When we moved to Gregory, we knew we had a larger school, the ability to grow. How have the, how do the numbers, I guess, the numbers that you have in terms of number of students versus capacity, ability to grow, how does that look?
I think that some of our class sizes, you know, are pretty typical, around 17, 18 per class. But I do think that we have a bit, as far as space goes, we still have some space. We have some very large classrooms there. Some of them are over 1,500 square feet large. So, we actually put in some walls last, last year. So, we've got room to grow, and we've got space. And because our class sizes are somewhat small, I think that, and there's no cap, I mean, I shouldn't say no cap, but we have some flexibility in our numbers because of the dual-language piece, that we're allowed to pull in more students than a typical school would, so.
Class size regulations don't apply to immersion schools, because by nature, if you're starting kindergarten, that's, you can't transfer in at 4th grade to a, to an immersion class. So, they get to start higher. So, your kindergartens are about 22 right now?
22 each, yes.
And you have to remember, in the upper grades, that program was, those are the kids who came over with the program, and that had started basically as one classroom. So, you, you think about, you've got 100 students in, 80 students in kindergarten. When that program builds itself out, they'll build that building. Even, even if some, some of the students were to move away, and they ended up with 65 kids in a, in a grade level. In a couple of years, there's not gonna be a whole lot of extra space in that building.
What are some of the lessons learned?
A lot. Well, first of all, I could speak to that. I don't know that it's anything that we could go back and do differently, because some of it is just the nature of the situation. And I think that merging two schools, merging cultures, we redesigned, we reestablished a new mission statement, vis, all of that stuff had to happen. When you, it was pretty much like creating a new school. So, I don't know that anything could have been different. I just think that, for me, it takes a little time to see what you have, to see what, what kind of teachers, what the strengths are of the staff, to really come up with a plan that's gonna best suit that school. So, lesson learned really is just, I don't know, I think, having an open mind and being positive, because you have to be positive. You have to know where you're going and have that clear vision, because if not, if it stayed, I don't know that I would have had any staff return if, if we had not gotten that clear vision. Because we have to get to know each other and build relationships, and all of those things just take time.
I think as far as moving forward, planning for next year, I think you need to get the board more involved, and let you know right now, I'll volunteer for the lawn party and popsicles on the playground.
Awesome.
Put me down for two. Two. What now?
Yes, we would love to have any of you out at any time. We would appreciate that, because we, we do have a lot of great things going on, and I would, I'd love to show that off, so.
How about from our, our teachers? Any, any, any things that sticks out to you in this whole transition?
Come on, speak up.
We love you.
You can see the smiles.
I'll pay you later.
Can I say something?
Come to the-
You need to come to the microphone.
And just for the record, you need to identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Catherine Blaylock. I'm a 2nd grade teacher in the immersion program. I teach the English side. This is my 2nd year. Ms. Lampley was so smart to hire me. I do want to say that this year is so, we've grown so much. When the kids come in in the morning, they're smiling. You could tell they're happy to be there. They're excited. They have that little kick in their step, and you see teachers lined up in the classroom, doors waiting, welcoming their kids, and it is such a wonderful place to work right now. I love it.
Kristi Young.
My name is Kevin Smith, and I'm the Senior Director for Participate. No problem. It's been a true honor to partner with New Hanover County Schools and the team that has led the immersion vision that started originally over at Forest Hills and now is at Gregory. I just wanted to take an opportunity to, to congratulate the team led by Dr. Markley and Dr. Smith. It hasn't been easy. Every new initiative brings forth opportunities, and it takes a community to understand what the goals for immersion are, and it's not solely a second language. That is a great byproduct. It is what happens with children in terms of literacy and in terms of achievement. That is the biggest bang for what we get in, through the immersion experience. Gregory, the transition to Gregory has taken a lot of work. In this first year, I think that with the help of Ms. Lampley and her initiative and her leadership, we have gotten through some really rough patches, and we have to acknowledge those. Those have to do with parents' understanding what this new community requires, and, and keeping the fidelity of immersion, working through getting to teachers and understanding what their needs are, and being able to step up to the plate and say, it's a little different from what it was before. And so, in partnership with New Hanover County, Participate is, is proud and want to express that we continue to be true partners. We have started the year on a positive note, and we want to continue to extend our partnership through this year. We already have dates for additional professional development that we're working on, and just making sure that we can monitor for fidelity. Ultimately, our goal is to enhance the student learning experience through everything that we do, from the administrator's point of view and the instructional staff point of view. So, thanks again for the opportunity, and if there are any questions, we'll be glad to answer.
Kevin, talk a little bit about what you're doing with Forest Hills, because we moved the program from Forest Hills, but we have a full-time Spanish teacher, they're still teaching Spanish, and we're offering some other supports there.
So, there are two programs under the Global Schools Department out of Participate. And one is, of course, the Dual-Language Immersion Program, and the other is the Global Studies Program. And Forest Hills, when we transitioned the immersion over to Gregory, decided that they wanted to, to continue to be involved in global studies. And so, it's a very energizing program, where immersion typically is a track within a school. The Global Studies Program involves the entire school, all aspects and all areas, from your PE teacher to your art teacher, special areas, and certainly the classroom teachers. And what we're doing there is, we are trying to build better citizens out of our, starting with our elementary students. We cannot wait until they get to high school or college to learn about what it means to learn and what their, how, what their learning impacts their immediate world here in New Hanover County and beyond. And so, when they're learning science, we want them to learn about those forces in motion and how that impacts the waves here at the beach, but what it also means for, for science and technology outside of North Carolina, outside of Wilmington. And so, there is a lot of professional development in learning how to be a global educator that the, that the teachers get to participate of. And that professional development is directly translated to actions and activities in school every day on a continuous basis. Forest Hills has done a fantastic job this year with their Global Studies Program, and we are also bringing that over to, to Gregory, the International School at Gregory, as the factor that will unify the entire campus. So, we do have the immersion program, and we're gonna have Global Studies that will encompass the entire campus. Yes, sir?
My question is, as you, as we transition from 90-10, meaning 90% Spanish and 10% English, to 50-50?
Correct.
What are, what are your observations there? What are, what have we learned? What's good, what's not good? I mean, what are your thoughts on it?
That's a great question. So, when we started to work with Forest Hills- That's a great question, so when we started to work with Forest Hills, that must have been in two thousand twelve, thirteen, school year, the program was a full immersion in kindergarten and first grade only, starting in second grade, they moved into fifty-fifty, so by virtue, and in all practical terms, the program was a fifty-fifty in upper elementary, the difference was the starting point, when you look at research, research does not make a tremendous distinction in student outcomes between a fifty-fifty program and a full immersion program at the starting point, it is, it is what you prefer to do based on the needs of your community, and certainly when we thought about the transition to, to the International School at Gregory, one of the things that we discussed at length with, with the district and the leadership team was how do we make this program more accessible to a broader portion of the community, and fifty-fifty, knowing that the results were not going to be compromised through a fifty-fifty program, that made sense to, to make sure that we could attract a broader, a broader spec, a broader portion of the community, it takes time, it takes understanding on, on, on the part of parents, parents typically, when, when you serve a, a community that comes from typically English-speaking homes, a ninety-ten program does make sense, when you look at the outcomes, and this has been studied, and there is a wide body of research between ninety-ten, fifty-fifty, there are no, there is nothing that we are compromising in terms of student achievement and academic achievement between a fifty-fifty and a full immersion program, so we still think that as long as we have a diverse community accessing the program at the International School at Gregory, a fifty-fifty model will serve them well. Any additional questions? So once again, thanks for the opportunity, we look forward to another great year at Gregory.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, policies on for first reading, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins, a little background before I present these nine policies, whoa, you don't want to hear about the policies? Now you have to go to work tomorrow.
School night.
Thank you. Twenty-eleven, we were given the opportunity from the state for the School Board Association to help us revise our policy manual, but the fee was something that we determined we did not need to allocate, and we found too, that when we were revising the policy manual, that we, when the different divisions came together, that we understood more about what each policy meant and how we could link the different policies together, those that we needed to delete or to refine, we did that, and every year, we, we certainly look at different policies, and certainly Mr. Bullard has to keep us abreast of all the, the laws that change, and certainly the curriculum changes, but what we're doing now is we're going back through the manual and we are again revising, but this time, we don't need the extension of all the revisions, so when, if you don't see a policy here, it means that we reviewed it, and it will save the date on that, so we keep the history of when we've looked at these policies and when we've made revisions or deletions, so tonight, you'll see those policies that we do need your approval at, at the October board meeting, so with policy twelve forty, we did add one bullet there to remind us that the confidentiality of all discussions during a closed session have to be, certainly have to be honored, that is a requirement of a board member, so that's the reason this is coming before the board tonight. If you look on page two, the statute has changed in that board members now have still required to get twelve clock hours, but it's every two years, so, and we're going to add to this before next, before the October meeting, to say what the dates are, Mrs. Adams is going to get that for us, so that you know when you should have those hours, four of us went to the district meeting, and unfortunately, we did not get recognized for the board having, every board member having those hours, we, you may have them, but unless you keep, keep track and turn them in, you don't have credit, so let's be sure we're responsible for that, okay? Any questions on twelve forty? Twelve thirty-four, we went through all the board committees and representatives and the appointments, tried to refine that, on page two, Mr. Shell, we did add in there that the board of directors meetings are conducted during the monthly regular meetings of the Board of Education, because there was a question of why we talk about head start each month, so this clarifies it, some of the committees are no longer active, so we deleted everything that needed to be refined, but I would ask, you look at the committee that you are serving on, or committees, and that if there's anything that's not accurate or needs to be added, please let Mrs. Adams know, okay? So, the next one, thirteen twenty, the only thing we added to this and would need your approval is that often closed session is, is not listed, but as tonight, it is on the agenda, so we wanted to make sure that that was placed in there for the community to look at and see when we do have a closed session or a topic of concern. Fourteen ten, I'm going to ask Dr. Holliday if he'll go over this one, you have that available, Dr. Mark, Holliday?
Yes, ma'am, when we talked about this one, since this policy was written previous when your board attorney was, well, it's the same dude, but he was a contractor from a law firm, and now he is on staff as a general counsel, and he's still your attorney, this policy needed some tweaking, and you all are supposed to be getting reports about the legal activity that your attorney is doing, and also outside attorneys, so he and I are going to work together to provide you that report once a year, so essentially, it's codifying the fact that you now have a general counsel who works for you, not a contractor from a law firm, that changes that relationship a little bit, this, and this policy addresses that, and it also makes sure that you're going to be getting the reports that you were supposed to be getting anyway, and so Mr. Bullard and I will work together on the legal services that you have been, that, that have been provided for the district that, for you and your stead, so that you'll understand that, and a lot of things that go on, not just the day-to-day stuff that, that he and I are working on, but things that we're working on with special education, with student support, with other parts, with our operations folks, all those things that go into, go into the play with, as you know, we've got, we're full of lawyers here tonight, you know, we've got lawyers sitting up there on the board, we've got lawyers out here, we've got lawyers all over the place, so you guys know, understand how that works, that we will need to provide that, so you'll, so you'll know what's going on in some sort of systematic fashion, as opposed to just getting it piecemeal, so Wayne and I are working on that, and we'll work with you to decide when you want that report, do you want it in, at the end of the school year, do you want it during the summer, do you want it at a different time, and we'll kind of work together on when it would be more appropriate to provide you that kind of information, so we'll be able to provide that information directly back to you, and this, so basically, it will be a yearly report, it'll be, this is what has been going on in the legal world with you this year, and give you that synopsis, and this policy will address that, did I leave anything out?
Thank you, Dr. Holliday. Sixteen oh one, the role of board members in handling complaints, we've added some procedures there that I think that we basically use, but we wanted to make sure that they're in place, so I'd ask that you review those very carefully, if you have any additions or questions about it, if you'll bring that to the policy committee, and also, we wanted the parents to see, or our citizens to see, there is a, a protocol that helps them get their concerns addressed in a professional way, and certainly all the cross-references and, and information there for them, so if you'll review that very carefully. Sixteen fifty, recognition of accomplishments, actually, there are no major changes, but we just determined the last part of the policy, that that was not necessary, because when we do have the Hero's Award, we do look at those case by case, and Ms. Quallbaum always contacts the boards and asks for input or suggestions, so, but it has to come before you because of this deletion. Eighteen twenty, evaluation of the superintendent, I'm going to ask Mr. Bullard if he will review this.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Nichols, the board asked me to revise this because it wanted to change the process for evaluating the superintendent a little bit, the main change is that in the past, the board has done individual comments about the superintendent's performance, and instead of sharing those with him, the board has come together and prepared what the board was calling corporate comments, so that the superintendent would see what the board as a whole, with the feedback from the board as a whole, the main change is going forward, the superintendent will see each individual member's individual comments, the public will not see them because that is still part of his confidential personnel record, and the board will still make the average scores available to the public, as it has done in the past, of the evaluation instrument, and will prepare a short public statement regarding its evaluation of the superintendent, so in a lot of respects, it's similar, or the same as it has been, and the main change, like I said, is that the superintendent will now see the individual comments made by the board members.
And we all agreed to that, because we felt that would be helpful for the superintendent to be able to discuss with those board members, the expectation or how the changes are, would be implemented, so if you look at that carefully, make sure that it follows your interpretation of what we determined, and again, if you will let committee members or Mrs. Adams know of any recommended, recommended changes. Twenty eighty, school building administration, the only change there is, besides the editing, was we added to, for the building principals to work, they worked to ensure safety of all students, because that's a major focus and concern all day long with all of our employees, and the last policy, twenty-two forty, relations with education, research, and service centers, and I'm going to ask Dr. Markley if he'd like to elaborate on this policy.
Yeah, when I came here seven years ago, we were getting a lot of requests from the university and others to do research in our schools, one of the, it's great to have a university here, but there's also some things that come with that, and we did not have a process in place to screen those, so we created what we call an internal review board, which is a standard practice for, for research requests, so all research requests now go to that IRB board, who reviews those requests and makes decisions as to whether it's appropriate to do those within our schools, because we get some, some kind of interesting requests sometimes.
So that's the end of the, the policies, I would say that they are all online, so that community members or employees or anyone who wants to address or have questions or concerns, we certainly want to hear from everyone, and they'll be ready for you for approval then, at the October meeting, so thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Next item on the agenda, superintendent's report, redistricting guide, guiding principles and timelines, appendix E on my.
All right, let me move up to the podium, and I'll ask Mr. Anderson to join me. If you have driven past College Park or Blair, the old Blair, you will notice those buildings no longer exist, they are, they have been torn down, and construction is beginning on those buildings, Porter's Neck, we will dedicate next week, so we are moving forward in terms of our construction projects, and those bring with them a need to look at our district lines, and so we are, I'm going to ask Mr. Anderson to review the timeline that he has put together for this, and this is really a discussion point tonight, we'll bring the timeline with any changes you recommend to the October board meeting for formal approval of that timeline, it's also a time to have a discussion about what you labeled in your last redistricting as guiding principles, so we'll share with you the guiding principles from the last redistricting, and I'd like your feedback and suggestions on changes there that I would bring back at the October board meeting as well for that, so questions on the two things that we need to, to look at tonight, all right, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Here he is, here's the startups evolving here, by the time we finish this process, you'll probably lose the rest.
It'll all be gone, Dr. Holliday said it blew off in the hurricane.
It's out there at the traffic circle at Ogden.
So, as Dr. Markley said, I think everyone acknowledges and understands that we have to redistrict, with the opening of new schools at our elementary level, we have to have new, new attendance districts, and to, to begin that process, we wanted to bring to you tonight, two things that will hopefully enable us to get started, the guiding principles, last time with, the board had established guiding principles, I don't think that they were formally presented and approved by the board, and we wanted to give you the opportunity to do that, the guiding principles, as, as submitted, there are seven, and would entertain any, any changes or comments, as Dr. Markley said, these are being presented to you just for information tonight, and then also, we wanted to present to you a, a timeline, in our class size compliance committee, we discussed redistricting, and there was a desire to expedite the redistricting process, to allow a final plan to be presented much earlier to the public, it would still be implemented in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, but, but we would get that plan out earlier, so we actually went back to our timeline, and we moved up the, the, the final plan date by a year, and hoped to have the final plan out and available October of two thousand eighteen. The plan as presented is, is basically three phases, preparation, we've already begun that process, we're in the process of updating our software, we have to import in new roads, new streets, new, new neighborhoods, new developments that have occurred since the last redistricting, we have new staff, so we're, have training that is already scheduled, and then as the software company calls it, geocoding students, we have to identify student attributes that we're going to use in the redistricting process, and we have to upload all of that information with the students into the, into the redistricting software, so that as we move planning segments, we can see what effect that has on the individual schools, but like I said, we have already begun those preparations, the next phase would be planned development, and that's basically the redistricting committee meeting, it is us presenting those plans to the board, inviting public input, and then the board's final approval of those drawing, of those plans, and then lastly, would be the implementation phase, again, we would like to, we'd like to target November or October of two thousand eighteen to have the final plan done, we would release that plan. We would release that plan. Kindergarten registration would then, the new plan would be implemented with kindergarten registration in February of 2020 and go in effect for the.
Dr. Holliday, just for the board, explain the typical enrollment season process, because that impacts what we do.
Enrollment season usually begins when the student assignments go home, the student assignments go home in early March. And that means we have to be ready for redistricting because we'd be sending home new student assignments to the number of students who have been redistricted. So that process begins there. That enrollment season for the choice options, as you well know, lasts through about mid-April, which we always say around tax time. That we get all those applications, and we see the spaces available we have in the schools. We send out acceptance and rejection letters at that time. And then, parents then have the opportunity to appeal to you, and we have student assignment appeal hearings in late June. That's the enrollment season, but it begins in late February, early March, when the student assignments go home. That starts the whole process. Kindergarten registration is about that same time, but the student assignments going home is a critical piece. That's why we have to have this plan done by February.
Dr. Holliday, what's the latest that we could send home those student assignments?
Statutorily, you have to send home the assignments in enough time to where the parents could appeal those assignments. And it's generally around that time. That's about as late as we can do it to get the appeals done by June.
You're looking mid-March as the latest that you can send them home?
Yes, sir. Let me ask a question. I'm sitting here listening.
We got, let me interrupt, let me do this. We've got two issues we're looking at, timeline and guiding principles. Let's, which one do you want to tackle first?
Actually, I'd like to tackle both of them, but I won't, I'll take, I'll take timeline. I'll take timeline. Because I don't understand, if you're talking about redistricting for the 20, I assume you're talking about 2021 school year.
That's correct.
So why are you, why are you so hot to get it out by October of 18? Why not October of 19?
You've got a couple of things here. You've got elementary redistricting, which is impacted by fielding. You also have middle school and high school overcrowding. And we were asked as part of the K3 piece to look at accelerating. And then, as a board, for you to have a discussion, do we split those two into two separate processes? Do we do elementary to match the construction phase, and then do the middle and high school as a separate piece to deal with issues related to crowded?
Well, what concerns me is I have been through, God, geez, Don, what, five, six redistrictings in our time on this board? And it's always been a board function. I mean, I read this, y'all gonna, y'all gonna come in here, tell us what y'all want to do, and, I mean, then we're either accepted, or we'll sit around and fight for another six or eight months.
I have a comment about what Mr. Higgins said. This is my first rendition, because I've just been put on board.
Welcome to the rodeo.
Thank you. So I would like the board to consider kind of a comprehensive redistricting plan. It's very similar to what Dr. Markley said. But for, I just got on this board in November, but for the last eight or 10 years, all you hear about is Laney and how many kids are there, how overcrowded it is, and nothing's been done. So I think that by putting this down the road and doing this in 2020, it's not fair to that specific high school. So do a comprehensive look. What Dr. Markley talked about is, let's address the middle schools and the high schools. Let's come up with the elementary school plan, because I think it's fair to all parents to know where their children are going to go to school. That obviously won't be implemented to 2020, 2021. But I think we need to address the high schools and the middle schools now, instead of waiting until 2021. And that's why I asked Dr. Holliday about when the latest we could send the student assignments home. You know, I look at this timeline, and it gives six months to basically do the planning. And my proposal would be, we know we have to do this. It's, again, Laney has, I don't know the exact numbers, I think 600 over enrollment at this point, and some of other high schools don't have that. So let's take those first three months from November to January and focus on the middle school and the high school, come up with a proposal, bring it in front of the board in February, and then maybe in March for some public input, and see if we can implement the high school and middle school for the 18-19. Then we can get into the elementary schools. Start working on the elementary school, come up with a plan for the elementary schools so people know where their kids are going to go to school, so we don't have the issues that we may have had in the past. And it just, to me, that seems like the most logical solution to do this. And Don and I are both on that committee.
Yeah, I was, my question is, what you're presenting here, I mean, I certainly understand the elementary portion, because, I mean, it has to be that way. But like David is saying, were you also, is that your recommendation also as far as that timeline?
No, this is only the elementary.
You didn't really address that, I don't think.
We, we're not, we're not presenting anything for high schools and middle schools.
This is just your elementary.
We're, we're addressing that in our class size reduction committee. We've talked about high schools and middle schools. Dr. Holliday, Dr. Markley, and I have met, we've been with, met with transportation, and we're putting some things together. When, when we get the program up and running, we'll be able to finalize some of those recommendations. And if the board wants to make some adjustments at the high school and middle school, you'll be able to do that before March.
And at this point, like David said, because we had talked about this from the other committee that we're both on, y'all, at this point, don't have any problems of that being done prior to the elementary, would you?
No. And to answer Mr. Higgins' question, our job is to give you a recommendation. At that point, you as a board, take the input you get from us, the community, and the rest. And you're right, it is your process at the end to draw to decide where those lines are. We're going to give you what we think is the best starting point.
And we're not proposing in this, this timeline was actually taken from the timeline that has been used in the past. So in terms of a process, if I worded something differently, I apologize, but the process that we've used in the past, the intent is that that's the same process we're using this time. So the same involvement by the board.
But I don't, I don't recall that we had come up with a redistricting plan almost two years ahead of time, because, because in this county, the movement of students, I mean, it's just like building a new school. I mean, we get Blair finished. There's a strong likelihood that you're also going to have to probably put trailers out there because it's, it's going to be filled to capacity. I remember when we built Parsley. All of a sudden, students start coming out of the woodwork to Parsley, and we ended up with tra. I just, I have a problem, this whole idea of, let's do it by December of 2018 for a school that's not going to be ready to accept students until August of 2020. It just seems a little.
Well, I could, the original timeline, we, we started with the March date, and we worked backwards. And, and we actually had, that we were going to develop the final plan in January of 2020. When we presented that plan to the class size compliance committee, there was, there was a desire expressed to accelerate that. So this is in response to that, you know, to that request. You know, it's the same, it's a.
Little direction here. Do you want us to provide you with two separate timelines? Middle and high school is one timeline, elementary is another timeline. Typically, you've done redistricting once, this means you would do it twice.
Mr. Anderson, you mentioned that it hasn't been done this early before, but, I mean, in all actuality, it's 21 months before those kids would be going to the elementary schools. My, my question is, is a lot of people are going to move into a certain neighborhood to go to a school. That's by definition what a neighborhood school is. I think it's fair to them to at least say, hey, this is where you're, you know, if you move into the school, this is where your kids are going to end up, instead of throwing out them seven months before these kids are supposed to go to school. I mean, it's 21 months, two years is not a long time. A lot of people move into neighborhoods, you know, especially in this area. We have the young professionals with some of the industries that we have coming in here that, you know, are just married, finding homes, living in a neighborhood, and they're planning to have a family. So I think it's important for them to know where they're going to go to school.
But I fear that if you get it too far out, they move into a neighborhood thinking this is the school they're going to go to, but then that school gets filled, and so all of a sudden, you find yourself having to redistrict to.
Anderson was overcrowded when we opened it.
Well, so was Parsley.
I know, that's what I'm saying. They, if you build it, they will come.
I have a question. How, how soon would the software be up and running to be able to determine whether or not, you know, how we could redistrict the high school and middle school?
We anticipate having the software up and running, training done, end of October. So November would be probably our time to do the initial plan. Maybe bring that in December, but yeah, Christmas or January for your first look at it. February is your public input month with a March vote. So you could do.
October this year, November.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
So that's middle high school.
That's feasible.
So, but you would be talking about moving, we would be talking about moving approximately how many students?
We'd have to really look at the numbers.
Five hundred something.
Well, the thing is, I mean, with the middle and high school, I think the, I think the difference in general, and not, not specific numbers, the difference is, you can make some, some adjustments in some district lines to help ease overcrowding and make, make a lot of improvements. Elementary school is a true redistricting.
Because we're going to have to start at the south end of the elementary and literally squeeze that ice cream cone all the way to the top to fill the space that we've got.
Adjustments mean students, though. And I, you know, I want to make sure that we're giving adequate time for parents. If we're talking about redistricting, we're still talking about moving students. And moving students at the high school is, to me, very sensitive because you're talking about students who are anticipating going to a certain high school, and that's a tough time to move. So I want to make sure that we're giving adequate time and notice to those students that, that their districts may change. So I think that, you know, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind redistricting. I think that I'd love to do something about the overcrowding now, I just want to make sure that we're giving adequate notice. I'm sorry, Dr. Holliday.
Yes, you make a good point, but in the past, what you've done with high school redistricting is you allowed.
Seniors.
Seniors at least. And in one redistricting, I remember, you allowed, you allowed juniors also believed to remain. So you don't see the full effect of a high school redistricting immediately. You can, you'd have some real relief, like you're talking about, Mr. Wortman, you could see some relief, but you see that, you see that true relief after, after you get your seniors who you've allowed to remain there. And that would be feasible, probably, letting the seniors remain there. Because if you've got two years at a high school, you're easily okay. But let the seniors remain, you would still have some of the district kids there.
So if I'm hearing this, just to make sure, because that, we've got to put this all in the next month's agenda. We're going to have two timelines on the October agenda for your approval. Middle and high school as one, and the elementary as a separate timeline, which would correspond to what Mr. Anderson has presented here. Mr. Chair, am I hearing that right?
I think you're hearing right on the, on the middle and high school. I still am not so certain. October of 18 is a, a, a date at which the board would be expected to approve a redistricting for elementary schools to take place in 2021. I think that, to me, that's too early. Now, that's just me. But I think, I think that might well reflect at least some members of this board, too, who have been, been here for a number of years, have been through many redistrictings, have fought those fights, and seen those battles, and been told that the people who live in Laney are actually closer to Pender County than they are to us folks down in the southern part of the county, and all that kind of stuff. I just think that, that October of 2018 is too early for elementary school, for a 2021 thing. Now, I have no, but I think we could proceed ahead with doing something for the middle and high schools.
Again, I mean, obviously, I'm on the other side of Mr. Higgins, but I think that being transparent is one of the most important things that we have here. If we're able to let people know what we're going to do 21 months before they have to send, I mean, 21 months is not a long time. I think being transparent's pretty important, and if we're going to slide this to as close to opening of a school, I don't think that's correct. I think that's wrong. We need to let people know what we plan to do.
Well, I think if you look at where you have August 2018 public input, you're not going to get a lot of input in August. I think that would be unfair to quite a few families. So I think you need to look at that and certainly move back. I recall the last time, we, it took us quite a while to go to the different districts or the areas of the county to hear input and to listen to these parents and to work with them. And so we want to be fair and, and give that opportunity to everyone.
I would say 18 months. I mean, February of 19 would be.
You give us the month, and we can, we can plan it backwards.
That's good.
So we start. Another consideration, you don't really know what the makeup of this board's going to be, and I don't know if you want input from any perspective, new board members that might be coming aboard? I mean, because that's October of 20, what was it, November?
November 18.
Yeah. I mean, that's just something that's considered.
Well, I think we're all tasked with doing the, doing the, I think we all can make a decision before, before an election.
But, yeah, but my point was, there might be somebody that would be coming on that might disagree or something, because that's tough.
No, I, no, I understand, no, I understand what you're saying. I just, I think that, you know, I'm not sure why three months makes a huge amount of difference, but, but no, I understand what you're saying.
I don't think three months really is a big difference. And maybe I could, in this schedule, address Ms. Nichols' concern, provide a little more time for some public input, and, and push that date back a little.
Get you past the election, so if there is a radical change, and then enable a different philosophy, it gives us some time to, to address those as well.
Although I would say that I think we're all, most of us are for neighborhood schools here, so, I mean, devising a plan before an election also has its benefits, I would think.
Well, I think we would certainly be putting that plan out there and, and getting public input before that time.
Right.
So, but maybe not the final approval of the board. But I think, you know, like you said, I didn't know whether we were talking about, you know, 20 months difference or, or three months difference. And if, if we're really talking about three months difference, I think that we could take that information back, massage this a little bit, and address some of your concerns. Not that you won't still have some comments, and that's fine. But, but we could, we could massage this a little bit and, and give you something to consider at your next meeting.
All right. Well, then, there's one other thing that let me bring up, and go back to your guiding And I realize, this is the one you sent out.
This was from your last redistricting, but I needed a starting place, so I figured since some of you were on the board at that time, it would give you a starting point to work from.
All right, I, okay. I do think, as Mr. Wortman said, as at least, I know this board feels neighborhood schools are still the goal of this board. And so I think that should be the number one guiding principle that this board is committed to maintaining neighborhood schools.
I agree.
I can, I can add that and shift the other, the others down, so we'll make that as number one.
I would appreciate that.
And it'll, it'll read like that in the next board packet.
Okay.
And so you're asking us to look at this again, and if we want.
This is a starting point, the next board meeting, you would approve these, and once we can move into both the high school and middle school and the others, let me, this is Tim speaking now in terms of neighborhood schools. High schools aren't neighborhood schools.
I was going to say, I.
Middle schools aren't neighborhood schools because you've got multiple schools who feed into those.
Yeah, but there is a, there is a definition that I think we have used quite often to beat neighborhood schools, and that is, it is a contiguous school district.
If you will pull the county. If you will poll the county, the county always is for neighborhood schools. I don't care what race, what socioeconomic, whatever, they are always for neighborhood schools.
I think number four covers what, what we're saying, especially this, this file says that, that, I think it's number four, maybe it's number.
It is.
That says, and be contiguous to the fullest extent possible.
I'd also like you guys to address an issue left over from the last redistricting, and that are, that is small satellites.
You don't want those to exist.
Yes, I do.
Well, how would you have neighborhood schools now that small satellites would be created?
We have small sat, we had small satellites because of Marsh Oak wanting to go to Ogden. We could only put so many people in Ogden, and the rest of the people living up in the northern part of the county had to go somewhere, as we took those districts, had no students in it at the time, and that's why, as, I mean, kinda like what you're talking about, we told people upfront, you're going to Castle Hain.
I just have one more question, and again, Mr. Higgins, I hate to beat this to death, but we're all saying here that we want to.
Go ahead and beat it.
I'm going to. We're all sitting here saying that we want to put in our, in this statement that we want neighborhood schools, but yet, we're also saying that, oh, but maybe the board will change, and we won't want to do neighborhood schools after the election. To me, it just makes sense that if we're all for neighborhood schools, to come up with a plan and approve a plan with this board right here. Just, I just wanted to make that statement again.
I agree.
Let's do it. If we want to, if we want to do it, let's get it done, and let's do it.
Jim, what are you not saying? You're talking about, you're offering up, we got a satellite problem.
I'm just saying that when I present you a plan, there aren't going to be small satellites, because you're gonna create yourself problems down the road. Now, I will go back to number, what's number one in this list, that's still on your list, and I will still present you a plan that, that within the confines as much, I mean, I understand the, the board's philosophy, but I also understand, I think diversity in a school is something that we should strive for as much as possible within the confines that we can do.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
And there's nothing wrong with drawing circles around schools. Doesn't necessarily have to be a circle, but it just really bothers me.
What does he want from us tonight?
He just wants to present this.
This is the discussion to consider.
Now, 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 let me finish, because it just bothers me when I see in the past pro, plans that have been submitted where a child can see the school within walking distance, but yet they can't go there. I think the first thing we need to do is make sure children within walking distance of a school can go there, then you just fight it out, the rest of it.
I don't know any student who can see a school and can't go there.
Well, we had some hardship here several years ago, where there was a district up towards Wrightsboro where they could see the school, but they went somewhere else.
Why should we have, why should we have as number one, making sure that all our schools are successful schools, rather than all this other stuff? I mean, I'm sorry, I, some of this, some of these discussions are a little.
Well, I think it helps build successful schools if you have parental input, and if you've got kids bucked all over with creation, that certainly is not the way to get the parents involved.
No, I agree, I don't, I don't think we should spend on transportation.
Because a lot of children, parents don't have transportation.
We don't have transportation, but I think what our number one guiding principle, it should be always, is making sure we have successful schools, and that should be closest to our hearts.
I don't disagree with that.
All right, so you will have three items on the agenda next week, next month.
Next week.
So you've got.
I know.
Guiding principles with the input received here, high school, middle school together, timeline, and then an elementary timeline, okay? All right.
Thank you.
Next.
Next item on the agenda is consensus items, personnel, appendix N. Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We recommend the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, or hear second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It's approved. Change of school assignments, appendix O, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board. You release the students that are listed there to the adjacent district because their parents are employed by that district, and they have requested such a release.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, or hear second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Budget amendments, Ms. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had several items I wanted to bring to your attention with these amendments. First of all, just to remind you that you recently received a budget book, which is the detail of the budget resolution you approved in July. This first amendment, the first state amendment revises all the changes that the state made that we didn't have at that time, including, including salary schedules and final allotment formulas. So we're increasing the state budget by about seven million to account for that. For the, the general fund, we are doing the routine things we would normally do in carrying over our school, unspent school balances, any outstanding project purchase orders that we might be working on, maintenance, that type of thing, as well as doing some, some fund balances that we have to, to, to balance programs. But one specific item that the board had asked us to bring was the Salary Committee of the Board met and asked to consider an appropriation for a top-of-the-scale bonus for those employees who did not receive raises because they, they were at the top of the state scale this year. And so the, the committee is bringing a recommendation that will cost, I have a total, almost ninety-one thousand, and it would provide bonuses up to the, the state raise that was eighty-three dollars a month, but prorated for, for part-time employees. And so those bonuses would benefit three hundred and fifty employees, and they range from seventy dollars to a thousand dollars annually. So, any questions, particularly on the bonus?
I'd just like to commend the board who was on that committee for recognizing the value of, of those folks who have given those years of service in our district. To do that, I think speaks highly of the work that they do in our system and the value that they have. I understand the state's philosophy as it relates to, they're more interested in the lower end of the scale, but the fact that we recognize those folks who have given that service, I just want to say thank you to you as a board, assuming you approve it.
Move for approval.
Is that it?
A little bit more, but if you're ready to.
No, go ahead.
No, 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 please go.
For the other restricted fund, we had some, some small additional grants that we got from Smart Start, Burris Welcome, and, and a slight increase in our pre-K allotment. And then for capital outlay, we are carrying over all the ongoing projects that were in last year's budget, so a carryover of one hundred and thirteen point two million.
Okay.
That's it. Now, I'm finished.
Move for approval.
I will tell you that, when you think of your, your, your policy around fund balance, this will keep you close to that six percent.
That was a good question. I, I have a motion to approve it.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Did you say six percent?
Six, just, just over six percent.
Okay.
And that was what we.
This is all, you know, I'm always gonna sort of preface it, but we haven't finalized financial statements for June thirtieth, but based on our estimates and where we are with the audit right now, it looks like it's gonna be about, after, after this is approved, a little over six percent.
And you were comfortable with being at six percent?
Yeah.
Marginally.
Byline.
Marginally.
Yes, to vote.
If you're reading byline.
Any further discussion?
Mary, so what is the NCVPS reduction?
That is something we planned on, but basically what, what they, they do each year is they, the initial allotments don't include that, and then they back out, within the first month of school, they, they back out seventy-five percent of what they think we'll use in the year, and then they take the rest in February. So this is all part of our planning budget, but it is an adjustment of the state budget. So, it's, it's netted in that seven point. So we got a seven million increase, it would have been eight if it hadn't been for the NCVPS reduction.
Okay.
So basically, we reserve teaching positions for that, and so we did not allot those. It's not really a decrease, it just looks like one every year.
Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It is approved. Old business, Isaac Bear Early College Calendar Revision, Dr. Smith.
Yes, I would ask the board's approval of the calendar change for Isaac Bear. We are moving their graduation ceremony from May twenty-fifth to May twenty-third. The venue that they typically use for their graduation is not available on the twenty-fifth, and it would be an additional four thousand dollars for, exactly, for them to secure another venue on the campus. So we're moving it to the twenty-third.
Which is what day of the week?
That is a Wednesday. It would be the last day for students. This is the recommendation of the school.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation, or hear a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Have a motion, or hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It is approved. Naming the Paint Grounds Building at Carolina Beach Complex, appendix R, Eddie Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item was first presented to the board in a previous meeting on February seventh. Since then, it's been posted on the website for public comment and has received overwhelming support. So tonight, we're asking for your final approval to name the Paint and Grounds Building at CBRC, the Gene F. Rackley Paint and Grounds Building.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion, or second? Any discussions or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is approved. Hard-to-fill positions, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of months ago, we brought the hard-to-fill position list for you to approve, and told you that if we should have any others that, as we move through the school year, that we would want to add to it, we'd bring that back to you, and we do have two that we'd like to put on there at this time. It is the occupational therapist and the physical therapist, which are both under special ed. They are hard to find, and we feel like this is, would be a good way to try to, to capture some of those folks and, and get them hired.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, or hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any questions or discussion?
Just a reminder, by approving this, what you're doing is allowing us to award one-to-one experience credit.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It is approved. New business, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Alternative Accountability Model for Alternative Schools, appendix V, Dr. Smith.
Yes, the State Board of Education requires for our alternative schools that we bring, that we present before our board and have them approve which option for accountability we, we want for those particular schools. There are four options available. We are recommending the Alternative Schools Progress Model. This will allow us to evaluate our schools based on their achievement along with their growth, but also to include another component that's called student persistence, and student persistence is defined as the percent of alternative students who remain enrolled in North Carolina public schools through the end of the school year. The other models are one that just looks at school performance grades, one that would return scores back to their home school, and then the other would be an alternative model that we create and present to the state board. So this recommendation is for option C, which would be having all of our alternative schools participate in the Alternative Schools Progress Model.
You've heard the recommendation, or hear a motion to approve it?
Move for approval.
Have a motion, or hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any questions or discussion?
Any downside?
There's not, beyond the, the fact that, you know, we're not happy about the accountability model in general for any of our schools, especially when it comes to how we calculate growth and how we calculate achievement, but considering that a, a lot of our students that find their way to our alternative schools are students who have more challenges than students in our traditional schools, we do appreciate the fact that the state allows us to consider their level of persistence as a part of the accountability model. So we do see that as a positive.
I, I guess, related to this, when you look at the schools, you have the eighty-twenty mix that you currently do with the schools. And you have some schools that just can't seem to climb out from that ugly grade because of some of their challenges, but they're actually making fairly significant improvements. Have we considered doing our own report just based, just based on growth? In other words, we still gotta comply with the state, we still gotta do all that, and if a school gets a D or an F, they get a D or an F, but if we sent out our own separate grade system just based on growth, have we ever considered that?
So, I don't think we formally considered it. I know that the principals that I talk to, we do talk about how you self-promote your school with your families, and it's very seldom that they'll have a conversation with their families about their, their, their school grade, or their, you know, whether it's eighty percent in terms of achievement or twenty percent growth. They, parents seem to be more interested in the quality of the school and the quality of the services that are being provided to their individual child. So, a lot of our schools kind of counteract this with collecting apparent perception data, and that's something that they do self-promote. So, as a district, we've never formally talked about creating our own internal report card, but that is definitely something we could consider.
How hard would it be to do it?
I think it just did, well, one, you'd have to get everybody to agree on the metrics, and I think beyond that, it would not be too difficult for us to, to generate that. Ms. Green does a great job when she does her school readiness report, and I think she really tries to highlight and articulate overall according to grand, grade spans, but we could surely do something like that, identify some additional metrics, and put that together for, for our schools.
Just some of the principals that you talk to have that challenge, that they've got that stigma when, when actually they've got a very dedicated staff that are making a difference. It would just seem to me that that separate report might keep a child in that school that might otherwise leave.
And there are systems who do offer, who are, who are playing with alternative internal report cards.
Yeah.
So there are some models we can look at.
Well, I was gonna ask about that, because option D was creating your own model, so I was gonna ask if there are any other school systems out there that, that have done that, where they've, they've emphasized, you know, the growth more, and, and has the state accepted that?
So, based on my knowledge and, and understanding, well, this is specifically to alternative schools, so this would only apply to, for instance, J.C. Rowe, Mosley, and Lake Forest Academy. But what I would say is, the, the, we could, I don't know of specific school systems that have, but I do know that the majority of schools do consider or do recommend option C, just simply because it does, does include that persistence model. I'd say probably the next most often choice, chosen option would be option B, where they send those scores back to their, their home school. And that's something that we haven't chosen to do, just simply because a lot of our children are in our alternative schools for a long period of time, and we want those teachers to, to have ownership of those children and, and those, their education. We could surely look at having some consideration of, of an alternative, but I, I mean, I would say that in speaking with our accountability folks, we believe that option C best represents our alternative schools.
And this is something you approve every year.
Yeah, and it's our, more or less, our low-performing schools, our underachieving schools, that we think the current state system, which, it doesn't give us these options, does a poor job of representing what those, what those teachers are, are doing with those children.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It is approved. Next item, memorandum of understanding for DC Virgo Preparatory Academy and Blue Ribbon Commission, appendix W, Ms., Dr. Smith.
Yes, I would ask the board's approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Blue Ribbon Commission and Virgo. This is pretty much our standard agreement that we bring before you every year, and it just outlines what we are responsible for as a district and what the VRC agrees to do as an organization.
You've heard the recommendation, or hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Just out of curiosity, what is the Blue Ribbons' involvement with the Lab School?
We've spoke, we, we've gone to them because they've been a partner with Virgo from the beginning, and they're, they are supportive of what we're trying to do.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure there wasn't gonna be any conflicts here.
Now, we've been to them, communities and schools, had conversations with Deborah Maxwell from the NAACP, as well as other groups that we think have a vested interest in, in that community.
Virgo Advisory Board's also heard.
Yes.
All right. All right. Got a motion and a second. Any other, any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. Next item, John T. Haggard High School Utility Easement, appendix X. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cape Fear Public Utility Authority is requesting a permanent easement over a portion of the property along Shipyard Boulevard at Haggard High School. You'll recall that the, the board granted one permanent and one temporary easement on May second. Once they got into design, they realized they needed an additional easement. This one is actually a fairly small easement. It's only four hundred and thirty-eight square feet, and it's located between the retention pond and the road. So it, it really doesn't pose any conflict with anything we're going to do out there or plan to do out there. So tonight, we're asking for your approval. I would say that the authority has offered nine hundred dollars in exchange for this easement, which is consistent with the price per square foot in their offer for the two previous easements you approved.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion to accept, to approve it?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
Are they going to be able to keep the tree?
They're going to try. We talked about that. And they, they will try to keep that tree. They put that in there just in case they save it. That's the, that's the goal.
All right. Well, hopefully they'll try hard.
Is that nine hundred dollars restricted, or is it open in general?
We give it to Mary Hazel. I'm not sure.
Well, I looked at her.
It's restricted.
It's not restricted. Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, Wilmington Health Access for Teams Agreement, appendix Y. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. First of all, you all are being commended, because you all are pioneers in this area of school health centers on campus. And one of the goals that you've had as a board for some time is to have a health center on all of our comprehensive high school campuses, and Haggard is the last one, and that opens this year. So these agreements for the health centers on our campus with our WOT partners is a matter of routine, but the one that's added this year is the Haggard one, and certainly would ask with enthusiasm that you approve these.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We only have one public concern at the moment, only one, only one time during the meeting to address public concerns.
Yes.
The board changed that policy to meet at the July meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Next item on the agenda, a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A three.
Mr. Chairman, before you roll into that.
Yes, sir.
We'd just like the board to recognize we have made one change in the, in our senior staff seating. We've asked, Ms. Julie asked you to start coming to board meetings, so if you'll see her, if you see her, that's because of a reorganization.
Okay. Very good. Welcome.
You going to write a review? You going to write a view, the review of tonight's meeting?
Absolutely. I'm already working on it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go into closed session for.
Start at one forty-three, three eighteen point eleven A three.
Yes.
Dr. Holliday is the only one from senior staff. The rest will be taking no action when we come back out, so have a good evening.
All right. Do I have a motion or do I want to first? I have a motion. I need a second. I got a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
And Wayne's got to go, too.
Aye.